Good evening, welcome to the Town Council meeting for October 29th, 2018. If I could start out the meeting just with a moment of silence for the Tree of Life synagogue shooting in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Thank you. Thank you very much. First on the agenda for tonight is the First Baptist Church. The recent event was a horrendous loss for the town as well as the parishioners in that church. We had an interfaith service last week that many of us have attended. A very moving night with stories and memories shared by many of the parishioners and many of the citizens in town. And I know that everyone in town, as well as everyone on the Town Council, is overwhelmed by the loss. And I know the Chief wanted to say a few words.
Thanks, Chief.
Firefighters always joke with each other that, you know, we'll see what the big one and so forth and make light of it. But the simple truth of the matter is last Tuesday night was our big one. And 11 firefighters responded and were immediately overwhelmed by a very intense fire in a very old, very combustible church. We eventually summoned seven alarms to help us, but those first 11 firefighters are the ones that made the decisions that guided the rest of the fire. And I want to make sure that they get credit for all of their actions, particularly Captain Paul Pranco, who was in charge of the shift. It's disheartening to show up at a fire and know immediately that you have to dismiss the building that's on fire as a total loss, even though 70 or 80 percent of it is still standing. But nevertheless, that's what we had to do, and we concentrated our efforts on all the surrounding properties. We had the Artychoaks Building with eight condominium units, two two-family houses, one on Yale Ave. and one on Lafayette Street. We had the McDonald Funeral Home, at least the garage part of it, Town Hall, let's not forget Town Hall. All those properties were starting to steam quite a bit and give off a little bit of smoke. And we were very fortunate that night that there was no heavy wind, and it had just poured out because both of those results made a difference. I wanted to thank the other town departments that came to our assistance. The Police Department also had to summon mutual aid, and they did an outstanding job in keeping people out of harm's way and in diverting traffic away from the incident. The GPW, particularly members of the Water Department, they activated the pumps on Broadway at the Broadway Pumping Station and managed to boost our pressure. I haven't come up with an exact figure, but somewhere between three and five million gallons of water were pumped onto that church fire in four or five hours. Our emergency manager, Tom Walsh, was very helpful. He was good at anticipating needs that we would have. He summoned lighting towers to the scene when the fire eventually darkened down, which took quite a while. We had sufficient light on the scene to, so we could see what we were doing. He also was instrumental in securing a crane service and the other companies that take the building down, which unfortunately was necessary after the fire. The Light Department killed the power to the church and a little bit of the surrounding area, I believe, to keep us safe. I have the feeling that I'm missing somebody, but that's, those are the most of the major departments I wanted to give credit to. If I'm forgetting somebody, I apologize. But I'm extremely proud of the Wakefield Fire Department. They pulled together, they did their job, they did it at great personal risk on some occasions. And I'm just grateful that no one was killed and no one was seriously hurt. I have two firefighter injuries, but neither one of them is serious, and I'm hoping to have them back at the station within a week or two.
Right, and that's exactly what Reverend Peter Brown noted the other night. He said, "No one was hurt, and thank God for that." But you folks did an outstanding job, like you say, risking life and limb. I mean, it was tremendous job. Unfortunately, I was there watching it, and as most of us probably were, but it was overwhelming emotionally for a lot of people. But you guys did a great job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, our building inspector was there.
Oh, jeez, yeah.
So, I know. What was amazing to me, and I was there for a lot of it, was how Chief Sullivan and his team, they managed that whole situation. You go into something like that, and there were 100 firefighters there from around maybe 20 different communities. And Chief was the commander, and his guys will tell you, they've been captains that have been coming in to see me, tell me what a tremendous job that was done. That was, you never have to, want to have to do that, but the training and the knowledge showed up that day, and that was really as seamless as you get in people doing their jobs. So I'm very proud, and we as a community should be very proud. No one got hurt, and at that, they were looking at securing and containing the fire. The owner of Artychoaks has been in to see me with tears in his eyes. I think Council Nibrowski was there when he came in. He suffered a cracked window, that was it, a cracked window. All of his tenants or people that own the condos went back to the houses, their rooms that night. They were safe. Another gentleman came in the other day, and we have a very open door policy, and Sherry and I wonder, a gentleman came in and we were saying, "This guy's coming in from Mawthen he wants to talk about the fire." And I said, "Oh, boy." He was eating dinner at Artychoaks with his wife, celebrating the anniversary, and he took the time to come back here to tell me what a job, he's from a public safety family, what a job police and fire did. And he said he couldn't believe the quickness, the protection, and that came out. And he wanted me to know, which was really nice of him, to come in, this gentleman, and say that. He works for the Mawthen Housing Authority. So I want to thank the Chief publicly for all the work that he and his guys did. It's his work that did. Thank you.
Comments?
Chief, thank you to your entire department. I mean, it was just so well-choreographed watching it. I was there for a few hours watching it, and there was never a moment where no one didn't know where they were to be or what they were to be doing. And it was, it was like you guys do that every day, the kind of choreography that was there. It was really impressive to watch, and I think, to Steve's point, it speaks to the training and just the quality of the department that we have in this town. One thing that struck me when we got word that the fire had started about two blocks away, and so I'd come over, you know, pretty quickly to see what was happening. And a woman had just come out of the condo building, the Artychoaks Building, and she was frantic, upset. She literally had just hurried out of her home and was watching the blaze. And so she came up to me and she just gave me this big hug, and she said, you know, "I got my cat and my neighbors." I said, "Are all your neighbors out?" She's like, "No, they are all out. We triple-checked, everyone's out." And so she just stood there and just hugged me, and for what felt like, you know, five minutes. And then her next thought after that was, "We have to rebuild this church." And that's what she said. The church, you know, it's, I've called it an icon of our skyline, it's a landmark for our town, it's a building that is so representative of Wakefield, you know, and not just the congregants, but the whole community. Those, you know, that are, have attended Tall Spire or currently attending Tall Spire as well. It's a fixture of our town. And in that moment, when her first thought was just making sure she was safe, to have her immediate second thought be, "We have to rebuild this," she said, "I want to," she's like, "I want to be a part of this." She said, "There has to be some kind of committee formed, and I want to be a part of it." As the fire is full blaze, just feet from where she lives, that was her thought, and it just spoke to the character and the spirit of our community. And since that time, the outpouring of support that we've seen, I think it's just been so impressive, and it just speaks to the values of this town and the good people, you know, that are part of this town.
It was a beautiful church. It was very painful to watch it burn down like that. I just...
As liaison to the Fire Department Chief, you know how much I love this department. I have many classmates, Wakefield High, class of '84, on the Fire Department, and I spoke with some of them that night, and you as well. And I think, I'm sure people can appreciate this, but the pain that I heard from their voices through their texts, talking to them the next day, knowing that they couldn't save the building, but so pained by it, and, you know, the boys, they're men, I mean, over 50, I guess we're men now. They have grown up with that church, but just, there's something about fighting a fire, I think, at a place of worship. When I was a prosecutor, crimes committed in a place of worship, but there's something a little different. And I could see the pain, and they sacrificed so much, and it is, as Ed was saying, it's a testament to the department how beautifully you fought that fire, and how organized it was, and it was like a well, you know, synchronized dance. So, thank you. I know the fire, men and women know that we support them and we think they did a great job, but it really was, I know it took a personal toll on you all.
Yeah, well, thank you. Mary?
Chief, thank you. Thank you for coming here and telling us a little bit more about that night. I just want to thank you again and your entire team. I was there the next morning and saw your team acting in exemplary way. And to echo what Ed and Ed, well, what Ed said about rebuilding the church, I also, as a Town Council member, want to know anything we can do to support your department going future, in the future. That's my concern, and you guys handled this brilliantly, but we had so many communities help us out. And if you need anything from us, please let us know.
Okay, well, I certainly appreciate the sentiment. Unfortunately, Murphy's alive and well, so the night of the fire, both of my reserve pumps were down and out, out of service. I don't know if anybody noticed, but we had to borrow a running engine to do the fire watch, which was, you know, which was fine. I mean, we've done the same for them. But, yeah, I would say that, you know, I need to start thinking about another engine. My two oldest ones are 1996 and a 2000, so. We've got, I already got one back, so we're, they're coming back, but something to think about.
Thank you.
Paul?
Chief, I've always had nothing but praise for the entire Fire Department over the years of sitting on this board. Every time that there's an event, it's all hands on deck, and your crew goes out there, and they'll stay there until the job is done. And you're the first ones to respond to out-of-the-town events too, like you recently did in Revere for the Sosio's property. I know that you had a large contingency there, and that was an extremely intense heat fire, much differently than what we had here, but your crew did an outstanding job on this site. I mean, we have everybody in the world to be full of praise of them, because I know that everyone sitting here is full of praise as well.
Well, thank you. I mean, all the departments around here depend heavily on mutual aid for an incident that size. There's just no control on an incident without call for help and getting it, so, thanks.
Julie?
I would just echo what everybody has said. Thank you very much. I have no doubt it was painful for you, as it's been painful for everybody else to watch it burn down, and just to walk by it today is painful. So, thank you for all you do, and hopefully, as a community, we can continue to support you and meet your needs.
Thank you.
Chief, you know my feelings toward unit departments, couldn't be prouder. The First Baptist Church will always have its special place in my soul. It was my wife's place of worship when she was growing up. It was the church we were married at 19 and a half years ago. It was the church where our daughter was baptized. To say the church was special to me was an underestimate. It also gave our downtown area and the common that classic New England feel to it. On Tuesday, October 23rd, our first responders bravely and gallantly did everything they could to save the church, but they were no match for the 150-year-old wood and the winds. They were successful in containing the inferno, more importantly, there were no serious injuries. I've spoken with Captain Pranco, who was the first response to the scene. He knew my ties to the church and was very apologetic. I immediately let him know that I couldn't be prouder of Wakefield Fire. Paul had told me that in his 30 years under the department, he had never seen a fire intensify so quickly. Their response was not a miracle, but a product of their training, professionalism, and courage on the fire. The recovery of the Christ portrait, that may in fact be a miracle. Thank you, Wakefield Fire, Wakefield Police, all Wakefield departments, and the communities that came to our aid. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, thanks very much. Appreciate all you do.
Kind words, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, 7:15, we need to move on to public hearings. I think it's a roll call.
Move it in for the public hearing?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Tono?
Tono. Yes, if you want to come on up? Hi, Brian.
Contingency of folks here.
Yeah, okay, sure.
I do need everybody.
Sure, just come on up. If you need more chairs, just pull them up.
Perfect.
It's a cozy setting, it's just four of you guys and Brian. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Town Council, for record, Attorney Brian McGrail, representing CMRG LLC, doing business as Tono Wakefield. It wasn't too long ago that we were before your board seeking an all-alcohol license for Tono at their property, at the location at 175 North Avenue. Since that time, the building has been completed. As you know, it's a mixed-use building with 60 residential condominiums and the retail service and restaurants establishments below. Tono takes up a large portion of that. They've been open for, how long now, Anthony, approximately?
August.
August. And they've been extremely successful in the town of Wakefield. They're doing what we thought they would do, they're bringing in folks from outside of Wakefield, and they provide a great experience for all. With me tonight is Matthew Maggiore, who is one of the principals and the current manager of the all-alcohol license, Anthony Catterano, who is the majority owner and who also is the chief chef, Dave Patrilli, who is a proposed investor, new investor in the business, and Sean Catterano, who is our proposed manager. Costanzo, right?
Costanzo.
Costanzo, thank you. I got too many, too many...
Too many vowels.
And I'm half, I'm half Italian, though. People don't know that.
We all end in a vowel, that's all you have to care about.
My mother's proud of that.
They had me a hello.
In any event, we're here for three purposes tonight. We're seeking a modification of the all-alcohol license to alter the premises. What we're doing with that is we're proposing to add on a private dining room, about 800 square feet approximately.
Just south of.
Yeah, which is, which will connect to the main restaurant. That will serve for private dining for, you know, folks who want to come in for a company event or a family event, and it will be right off of the main dining room. We've submitted a site plan showing how that incorporates into the existing restaurant. So that's the first ask that we have of your council. The second is, is, I think when we came before, Matthew was named the original manager because the restaurant had not opened yet. Now, we're proposing to have Sean as the manager. Sean has worked for Anthony for approximately 10 years at Preza in the North End, so he has experience in the restaurant industry. And then the final thing we're doing is we're asking to add a member on to our LLC as an investor. Currently, Anthony is a 70 percent owner of the restaurant, and he is selling 10 percent of his interest to Dave Patrilli, who's a friend, a longtime friend of Anthony's.
And the manager in particular.
And the current manager of Preza. Okay, thank you.
And Potter.
So there's some connections there. So those are the, those are the three items that we're looking for. We're happy to discuss one at a time, if you'd like, or all of them together. Your preference, Mr. Chair?
I think we can do... Sure, sure.
Brian, with regard to the private room, is the footprint expanding at all?
Outside the building? No, no. When it, it was, originally when the building was permitted, there's approximately 8,000 square foot of commercial area on the first floor.
Yep.
And when that was permitted, it was allowed to be retail service establishment indoor restaurant use.
Okay.
And they didn't know how that was going to play out, who would rent it at the time.
Sure.
And as you know, Tono took up a majority of that, and now they need more room. So they're just going to grab some of that space that already exists, so there'll be no footprint change to the building, and no increase in what was originally permitted.
How long do you think the build-out will take, Brian? Just roughly?
It's a three to four, three to four-week build-out.
Okay, so you might make the holidays if we can get through this, right?
That's the goal.
That's the whole goal, okay. But a guess, okay. Paul, any questions?
I'm just following up on Monsanto's question. It's when you're not there facing the building, it's the building on the right-hand side, right?
So Tono is all the way to the left, to the right, and then we have a center space that's approximately 1,700 square feet...
Oh, it's the center space, it's not the back space, okay.
Of which we're taking about 750.
Of the 1,000, right? Wasn't there a 1,000 there?
Which leave about 1,000 for rent space.
Okay, and everything will be done, closed off, so it won't interfere with anything as far as pedestrians going in and out of the building?
Oh, not at all. Okay. So main entrance of Tono will serve as the primary entrance for the private dining, and there's a separate entrance for that balance of 1,000 square...
Okay, very good.
All within the courtyard.
Very good.
Julie?
Yeah, is the separate dining, I assume, this may be more a question for my colleagues. Same closing hours, all the same rules apply, I assume?
Ed?
We're covering the approval of the manager as well.
Well, we could do all three at once, I think, if, unless you want to do them individually. It seems like it's a combo.
All right, so, so I know that Mr. Costanzo had submitted some information to us. My understanding, Sherry, do we have back fingerprint results?
Yes.
And I know that back on the 25th, Mr. Costanzo submitted the, or signed the query request form. That goes to ABCC. We don't know if anything will come back on that, correct?
Yes, yeah, and that's, that's a standard form.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but at this point, we don't know what the results of that would be.
You never would at these hearings, because this hearing comes before ABCC in all instances. But I, my experience is if ABCC sees something that they don't like, they let you know.
Well, I mean, and they'll deny it over, even if we approve it, they'll deny it.
They could, yeah.
Right. So with respect, I know that Mr. Costanzo had an OUI in 2008.
Correct.
And then there was some reference of him having taken the tips for training extensive alcohol, it said alcohol programs, but then it was unclear. So has he had any other issues aside from that, and could he speak about the alcohol issue, or the alcohol program that he attended back at that time?
Sure. So just, and thank you for bringing that up, and I was going to bring that up also. We disclosed in our application, as we should, that he has had this issue. I actually obtained a copy of the police report, I'm sorry, the court report, the disposition from Cambridge District Court on the matter from 2008. The matter was continued without a finding, and part of that continuance is, is he was required to take alcohol education programs and participate in courses, which he fully complied with. And he has submitted an affidavit that goes back 10 years ago. He's learned from that incident, and he's ready to move forward in his life and feels that he's qualified for this position. If you would like to speak with him or hear from him directly, I'm fine with that. That's my policy, that I open it up to my clients on these issues. So I don't know if you have anything you want to add on that? Can you confirm to the council that you completed all of the courses that were required by the court?
Yeah, I followed through with all the requirements, I mean, 10 years, 11 years ago.
Is there anything else that's going to come up on this query when it's run through ABCC?
No.
I think that we know, one of the, just, it's not specific to this request, but in general, we have a real disconnect here in town between the fingerprinting, which is what's required, and I think all that we're allowed to do, and the query. And for those that don't understand, the fingerprinting will only show us any activity in a particular department relative to an incident where someone was in fact fingerprinted. And so in 2008, for example, it wasn't common practice necessarily to fingerprint for every, every arrest.
Yes, it was.
In fact, it wasn't, because in, well, I can tell you, because the fingerprinting in this, for this, the, I spoke with Chief Smith about it, and in fact, the fingerprint results showed that there were no incidents whatsoever. So this 2008 incident did not come up through the fingerprinting. It will come up through the query, but I think we have a real disconnect just going forward. And I know it's a bylaw issue, Tom, that perhaps you could speak to, but, you know, and I realize that ABCC ultimately has the authority, but as a general practice, we're kind of going through the motions here with, you know, the fingerprinting for any of these cases, because ultimately, the query is going to be what's determinative anyway, but we don't have access to that at this level.
The Chief, the Chief of Police and the Bylaw Committee have been working together to try to update the fingerprinting bylaw specifically for that purpose mostly, and for other purposes as well. There was, there is a revision that is on the warrant, but I'm pretty sure there is going to be an effort to get indefinite postponement because the Chief wants to further refine it. So the hope is that at the next annual town meeting in the spring, we're going to have a complete overhaul of the fingerprinting bylaw.
You know, I appreciate you being forthcoming on the OUI. If we had just relied upon the fingerprinting, we wouldn't have known about the OUI as a part of our work. So, you know, that's something, and again, it's not a reflection on you, but it's a reflection of how this process is working, and it worked in a way kind of rubber stamping with, you know, one eye covered, because we don't know exactly what's going on. So I think that, you know, fundamentally, that's an issue for me, because if we're approving something, I want to be fully informed about it. I don't want to just have scanned information based upon if, you know, what may or may not have been recorded, you know, with the fingerprints. Just one other piece, too, I know you had mentioned that there, the ownership changed. Does that have any impact, Tom, in terms of the licensing, the shifting of a percentage of ownership?
It has to be reported to the ABCC, that's all.
Okay. And that's part of the application. Right, no... Yeah, I see. I know you had mentioned, Mr. McGrail, it was a 10 percent, was it 10 percent of his ownership, or was it 10 percent ownership?
10 percent, Anthony was a 70 percent owner, and he is selling 10 percent of his ownership to David.
All right, so I just, for the form then, that should be adjusted, because it says that, it puts him at 60 percent, but actually, 10 percent of his ownership would be 7 percent, which would break him down to 63 percent.
No, he was originally 70.
Right, but if he's selling 10 percent of his ownership?
Yes.
Then that's, that's seven, so that would be 63 percent remains for him.
10 percent of the 70.
Right. But that...
I'm sorry.
10 percent of the 100.
10 percent of the 100. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just so you know, for your own purposes, it's not written that way in that agreement.
I understand, okay.
So you may want to just correct that for your purpose.
Point well taken. Yeah, I'll resolve that with Sherry, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
And that was my mistake, not Sherry's. So when I say I'll resolve it with Sherry, I'll make sure, I'll make sure it gets, it gets resolved prior to going to ABCC, so thank you.
Paul?
I don't have a question. I mean, I, we have a process to get things licensed, and there's a reason the state takes care of it, the license board takes care of it. My question actually, was actually for Steve, so you guys have been around since August I've yet not to come in, but when you guys were being built, we got a lot of folks, numerous folks coming in talking about parking, and I just want to know, have you gotten any concerns or complaints about that in the last couple of months?
We actually were talking about that today in preparation for the hearing, and I don't think we've had any. I mean, there were a couple that, when we went out and did some ticketing, some patrons, you know, were concerned, and there's been some concern about going across the street at the MBTA, but that's not our law, our land, so, no. As far as neighbors and concerned, no.
Right, so adding more seating shouldn't be a problem?
Absolutely, yeah.
You have not heard?
Have not heard of any problems, yeah.
You guys have heard, have people...
Just a quick comment on the seating. So, thought process, we have about 50 seats outdoors right now, so as, as that closes down for the season, you start moving that, you know, those people into the indoors, and it would be very infrequent that we would have, you know, full capacity outside and full capacity inside.
Anthony, can you address Council Butt's question on the parking? Have you had any issues with parking with customers, or any concerns or overflow parking issues?
No, we haven't had, we haven't had any complaints from neighbors.
Good.
And we, on the website, we guide people and ask them not to park in residential spaces, especially when they call on the side streets. We tell them that, you know, we have our lot, you know, across the street from the building, there is MBTA public parking that they can park in with a pay-by-phone app, so we guide them to that. And we also instruct our employees to not park in residential spaces as well, especially when they're hired. You know, we tell them where they park is their business, but not to park... You know, we tell them where they park is their business, but not to park around the building and not to park in residential spaces. Yeah, we're pretty strict on that.
Thank you. How many employees do you guys have now?
We were up at about fifty-five with the patio when we opened, but I think we're down about forty-four now. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Paul?
Just another question, because it opened it up. So you're saying that the, because the outdoors won't be available during the winter, that you, it won't be an issue with the numbers of people in there due to the new room that you're creating? Is there a new room going to be exclusively for functions, or will you be opening that up as a restaurant overflow as well?
The latter.
Restaurant overflow as well?
Both, but I mean, if we were at capacity in the main dining area, we'd have the ability to overflow that if there wasn't a private event going.
Okay. Just wanted the clarification, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Tony's good.
Ed? Just one other piece, too. I know the sound from parking noise was a concern, the patio noise. And I'll say to your credit, I've not heard anything from anyone about it. I've been by there on the weekends at night when it's been crowded, and the noise containment has been very good. And I don't know that you've heard any complaints, but I know that we as a, I have not personally. Right, exactly, yeah. So how, how it's laid out is, and it's, and it's a nice addition, you know, being able to be outside like that.
Yeah, we try and keep the music to background level.
Right.
Think the crowd is more conducive to dining and not so much drinking and snacking.
It's not like a loud, raucous kind of, you know, chugging beers kind of thing. And he's upset about that part.
Just to add to that, too, I'm only there to accomplish across the board, and the only negatives were that they haven't got over there yet to check out the food. So if that's all I hear for negatives, I think that's fabulous, so congratulations.
Best pork chop in town.
Best pork chop in town, for Tony. Julie, anything down there? Okay, good. Okay, so I mean, we really just could take all three at one time, if we can get a motion on that.
Just move as presented.
Just.
Move as presented.
I move that we approve the three points as presented with regard to Tonau.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations.
Thanks.
Finish it up before the holidays.
Okay.
Close the public hearing and then off to the next one.
Okay.
Close the public hearing for the Tonau's licenses.
Second? Thank you. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. And so we're going to. Okay. Okay, so is anyone here from Shell?
No.
No, okay, so we're, we're opening up the Shell gas station, which is four B one. Possible vote to open public hearing for change of license to include diesel fuel for Shell gas station at three fifty-six Lowell Street. So that's Lowell and Vernon.
You need to open it, you need to open it.
Okay. I move that we open the, the public hearing on the Shell gas station.
All in favor? Roll call, sorry.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, so.
Yes, I can, I can take this one real quick. I have a memo from the HS, from Hussein Savingil at MHF Design Company, who's representing the owner. Please withdraw my client's application to the town council. They have decided not to pursue diesel at this time.
Okay. Sounds easy.
I think that if the board would, or the council would accept their withdrawal, if they ever change their mind at a future date, they've got to come back and start it all over, so we have to.
I think we accept the withdrawal of the Shell gas station as noted by Steve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Move that we close the public hearing? Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to go to? Yes, let's move on to public participation. Thank you all for waiting. Sorry about that, a little bit of a delay, but all worthwhile. So if, could I have that list, Sherry? Thank you. So again, total amount of time allowed should be fifteen minutes and shall be divided by those who have signed in. However, in no event shall any speaker be allowed to address the council for more than a total of three minutes. The council will not engage in dialogue, but will give any remarks made appropriate consideration. And Steve Mayo, our town administrator, will now start his clock after we have the first person. Is it Pina? First? Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, town councilors. I'm Pina Macharelli. I'm here as a citizen to ask you to consider supporting ballot three question on the November sixth state election. Bipartisan legislators support the vote. Businesses in the state, large and small, have signed on to support question three. Law enforcement throughout the state have registered support for this bill. Numerous town councils, city councils, and school committees have signed on in support of question three. And religious leaders of many faiths are openly in support of the ballot three question. Question three is just, is not just a ballot question. It is also a statement that Wakefield Town Council recognizes and supports its citizens that are transgender, lesbian, gay, bisexual, and queer. These people are our family, friends, and neighbors. These people are our students, coworkers, caretakers, business owners, parishioners, consumers, and community leaders. Listen to what is happening in our world in just the last week and how we need to deter anti-hate message. After this, I am going to the anti-discrimination training that's being hosted at the library. Let us give our children and neighbors the recognition and rights that they deserve. I ask that you please support, consider supporting the ballot three question. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, if we could have Samir.
Samir Patel?
Can you just state your name and address and then?
Sure. My name is Samir Patel. Hello and good evening to all the town councilors. I live on Felsmere Avenue. As a citizen of Wakefield, I'm really here to advocate at the town council, support ballot question three. Sorry about my hoarse voice. Ultimately, for me, it comes down to the issue of fairness. What kind of a town do we want to live in? What kind of a place we want to aspire as far as our community is concerned? And there's a lot of pros and cons that are presented. When all is said and done, for me, it's really about what is the right thing to do. And even though there are certain issues around privacy and so on that are presented, in my view, the issue of doing the right thing, treating each person as a person, treating people as people without discrimination, is really the crux of ballot question three. And I urge you all to support ballot question three. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine? Welcome, Janine. Could you just state your name and address?
Janine Fabiano, twenty-nine Lafayette Street. I'm here also to speak about question three. I'm a member of this community and also a member of the Social Action Committee of the Unitarian Universalist Church. A few weeks ago, we had the wonderful opportunity to partner with the Human Rights Commission, and we co-sponsored a speaker panel with four transgender people. This event was filmed, actually, by WCAT, so for anyone who wasn't able to attend, it's a, I highly recommend watching it. Hearing their powerful life stories really reinforced my belief that we all need to support their individual rights. This won't change their own personal struggles and challenges, but at least publicly, their rights will be protected. These rights are just the same basic rights afforded to the general public in their everyday lives. Voting yes allows for the continued access for all individuals to go to their own stores, their hotels, restaurants, theater, hospitals of their own choice. This law has been ref, has been referred to as the bathroom bill. This is a very small part of what repealing this law would negatively affect. Overall, there has, in the last two years that this has been law, there has been no documented misuse of this law. Voting yes will allow the population of our friends, neighbors, coworkers, elected officials, to continue to live and work and socialize as the general public is afforded. So I hope you will support voting yes on question three. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura? Welcome. Could you just state your name and address?
My name is Laura Barker. I live at thirty-eight Salem Street. And I am here too as well to ask for your support for question three. Since my husband and I are homeowners and longtime residents of Wakefield, we are also the parents of two children, one of whom is transgender. And it is imperative that she and other members of the transgender community are protected against discrimination under the law. The fact that her protections can be repealed is disheartening, and I'm asking the town council to publicly stand up for her and other trans and non-binary youth who aren't able to vote on whether or not their civil rights are going to be protected. It is terrifying to send a trans child out into a world that often treats the trans community either as evil predators, punchline of jokes, or objects of morbid curiosity. Trans and non-binary youth are the victims of bullying at much higher rates than the rest of the population. More disturbingly, a survey published by the American Academy of Pediatrics reports that over half of all trans male teens, almost thirty percent of trans female teens, and over forty percent of non-binary teens have attempted suicide. And support from families and communities can play a very large, large role in helping prevent suicide attempts in the trans community. The town council is public supportive. Ballot question three was a message that Wakefield is welcoming and inclusive town, even for the most vulnerable among us.
Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Okay. So that's it for public participation? I'm trying to come out of that. Is that a roll call?
No.
Just, okay. Do you want to just start, let's go back to three?
Yeah.
Okay. So the presentation action items, the first one for the state of the state, we actually are going to pass over that. Melrose has a community prayer service that all the state officials have attended tonight, so they won't be here. Next, we'd love to have Dan Lever with the Bylaw Review Committee come up for possible discussion with the Bylaw Review Committee. Dan, you're.
Sorry, is the city of the state going to be rescheduled? Are they going to come back in?
Uh, I don't know.
Yes, they will.
Okay.
Great, yeah, it's, it's nice to get that.
Yeah.
Sure, no, I didn't know if they were coming back in or not. Okay.
Thank you very much to, to all of you as the town councilors. Greatly appreciate the opportunity to present the articles that the Bylaw Review Committee, which has been very busy working on, and will be presenting to the town meeting. This will give you a preview of what is actually being proposed by the Bylaw Review Committee. This way, there will be hopefully fewer surprises at the town meeting itself. So we've been working consistently for about two years now. We started in November of two thousand and sixteen. And just since the last town meeting that closed in May, we've had eleven meetings. We, we meet almost as often as a town council, but you do beat us, and that's okay. Our town barrister, Tom Mullin, continues to provide us with expert opinions. And eventually, we'll probably try to put forward a bylaw to rename the town council singular to town barrister, or some such title that seems more befitting than to have confusion of town council. We do actively solicit input from a variety of different areas, including town departments, individuals, affected boards, committees, commissions, councils, and otherwise. So it's very important to the Bylaw Review Committee to get as much input as possible, including last minute input, and you'll see that discussion a little bit later. Related, and as a part of that input, we've actually, I'm happy to report, the town has actually adopted in our May town meeting, adoptions that actually promote respect, similar to what the prior presenters were discussing, that Wakefield actually has among the most accepting bylaws now as it relates to the ability to have things such as religion, as well as we specifically adopted bylaws that allow and codify the Human Rights Commission itself. So just to present that, that Wakefield does have the acceptance in their bylaw review overall has been very accepting as well. So we have ten separate topics before you tonight. Our goal was to simplify, remove unnecessary language, and make, make things ultimately better for the town and consistent with the values of the town. We do hope to wrap up at the May town meeting, April, May town meeting next spring, and present a report along with our findings. Hopefully, we won't have as many town articles at that town meeting. This one will, this one will be long, that hopefully the April, May one won't be. So first, Article fourteen, the Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter one seventy-five, there's everything other than snow and ice, which we already went through at the May town meeting. These are predominant language clarifications as requested by the DPW. It also renames things such as coasting, which we actually did have to go into the archives to refer to, is now commonly referred to as sledding. As opposed to having a car that coasts down the street, sledding is technically prohibited on the streets themselves, so this actually clarifies that. DPW requested changes specifically to codify the way that they do charges for street cuts and things along those lines, and make sure that there's protections for that. Articles fifteen, sixteen, sponsored by the town council, are related to this. Article seventeen is an omnibus bylaw revision as a follow-up to the successful charter change that your body actually made last, last November, and that was ratified by the voters in April. This changes the formerly known as Board of Selectmen to Town Council in the bylaws themselves. It's an omnibus article. We did consider and deliberate putting in a criminal provision, the town administrator is not allowed to call the town council Selectmen at all, but we opted not to take that change at this time. Article eighteen is on historic structures. This one, I just will call out that the language that's in the warrant is slightly different than the motion that will actually be made at the town meeting itself. And that was just due to a inadvertent clerical error, that the, a different version of the article itself was printed. The purpose of this, which is still consistent with the warrant itself, is to continue the preservation of historic, historic buildings and to keep the six-month demolition delay. It also goes ahead, and it's, the actual motion as it will be made, will allow for an application fee to cover the posted notice for anyone who wishes to have a potential waiver of that before the Historic Commission. That should have a positive financial impact on the town. Right now, that comes out of town budget, and the taxpayers, for anyone who wants to make that, that particular waiver request, that will actually now be borne by the person who's making the request itself. We did consult with Historic Commission, and we also to give them additional enforcement capabilities, so the building, the building inspector and the Historic Commission independently can both find violations. The violations include a three hundred dollar per day fine. So this way, we do not want someone destroying a building, thinking that they can just put another one in its place. It will be extraordinarily costly for someone to violate the bylaw. And obviously, we don't want to have any buildings destroyed inadvertently or maliciously without having the opportunity to be sold. That's the purpose of the Historic bylaw. It really does work. Hunting and trapping in Chapter one thirty is just clarify language, and it removes gendered references to the police chief and so forth. So there were, there was some language in there that needed to be cleaned up, pretty minor changes overall. Chapter one forty-three, very similar to Counselor Dombrowski, got the name correct. It was, is actually up for discussion. It is on the warrant. We are recommending indefinite postponement for similar reasons as you have highlighted. We, after much consultation, including with Chief of Police, where we clarified the language and the ordering of it, we're recommending that it be overhauled on a larger basis. Police chief has made this request, and we voted earlier this evening to recommend indefinite postponement. Article twenty-one is on sidewalk cafes, similar to Tonau's, which was in earlier this evening. It actually clarifies the language, there's technically conflicts in the language, where there's requirements that the sidewalk cafes be greater than a hundred feet and not be greater than a hundred feet at the same time. And so this clarifies the language and makes it so that there is flexibility, and also clarifies the difference where it is not zoning. So it makes it so that the language becomes much clearer, and promotes the idea of sidewalk cafes, still leaves it up to the town council to make the determination whether a particular parcel is appropriate for, under the circumstances. Article twenty-two is on news racks. There isn't a whole lot of change here, but it does correct misspellings and obsolete references to laws that are no longer appropriate. references to laws that are no longer appropriate. It also clarifies the days as town business days. Right now, there are numbers of three days and five days in the bylaw. Those can't always necessarily apply depending upon the day, so it makes it town business days. This bylaw is not implemented very often in its application. There are only a few news racks left in town, but it does go ahead and clarify things along those lines. Chapter one sixty-five, Sewers, this will be hopefully a relatively quick article. It's predominantly language changes. It clarifies the ownership of grinders, not what everyone wants to talk about with sewers, but it is very important that the homeowner or property owner own the grinder itself, even if it's installed on private property by the DPW. It clarifies definitions per DPW practice. All these changes came at the, for, almost all these changes came at the request of the DPW. Storm drain management, Chapter one seventy, similarly requested by the DPW. It clarifies the language, makes it consistent with federal and state law. It also clarifies the requirements for the homeowner activities. This one, I just want to comment, is actually where having a Bylaw Review Committee was really helpful to make sure that the language actually meets the needs of the town's residents, because we actually deliberated quite extensively to make sure that the homeowner activities were still permitted in a way that is legally acceptable and clarified in the bylaws themselves. Chapter one eighty-five, which will be the last one we'll be presenting, is on water, and it's just language changes for consistency with the DPW. So hopefully, none of these will be particularly problematic at this town meeting. With that, thank you. If you have any questions, I will do my best to try and answer them.
Thank you, Dan. That was great. It was nice and defined and short. Any questions? Great. Hey, Dan, thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you next Monday.
Absolutely.
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, next is three C, the Greenwood paid parking spots. Steve, do you want to?
Yes, there's a letter in your packet from the Advisory Board of Public Works. Geez, must have been around ten, eleven years ago, we set up kiosks in Greenwood regarding parking at the MBTA station there. That amount has been unchanged at two dollars per day since then. And recently, the MBTA station increased to six dollars a day and five, and two dollars on Saturday and Sunday. We don't charge on Saturday and Sunday up at Greenwood. So we are recommending that the, we increase one dollar a day modest to three dollars per day during the week excluding holidays. We will certainly patrol that area once this goes into effect, again, because there are people that for a buck a day will try to find some neighborhood to park in, which they're happening now anyway, so we do think this is a modest move to move forward and be competitive with what's going down the North Ave.
Okay.
Steve, can I just ask you a process question? You said it's a letter from the Advisory Board, but it's actually a letter from DPW, right?
Yeah, but this was through the Advisory Board process.
But who's making the recommendation?
I guess it's from the Director of Public Works.
Right. Okay. And Rick isn't here tonight?
No, he's not.
He just did the letter?
Yeah.
Rick or Joe is not here?
Yeah, nope. You're stuck with me.
No, it's fine. I just want to clarify that the recommendation is coming from DPW, not the Advisory Board.
It says the Advisory Board.
They were CC'd on it.
Right.
The letter said that they voted to recommend, so I think that the Advisory Board, this is their recommendation, it appears. I think he's just the messenger. Am I misreading this?
No, you're correct. Advisory Board recommended it.
Questions, comments?
So, Steve, do we have a sense of what sort of revenue we're looking at from this?
Well.
Just generally on an annual basis?
I'd say we're, when the economy wasn't so good, we'd have thirty, maybe thirty bucks a day, or thirty spaces a day. So this is going to, if you look at this now, and I drive by every day to kind of get a mental mode of it, we're looking at fifty, sixty spaces now, so the economy's better. So we're looking at an extra sixty dollars a day. You know, it's not a huge revenue, but I think it does kind of make sure that we're somewhat competitive with that, so. If we pick up thirty, forty, fifty, thirty, forty grand a year from this, that's probably in the ballpark right now.
We'll take it.
Yeah.
It's mostly out of town.
It's a lot about out-of-towners, which is interesting.
That was the other question. But do we know that, though? Because I know a lot of folks in town are driving to park if they don't, if not within walking distance.
So I did it for years. I parked at Greenwood for years. There was a handful of Wakefield, the majority Wilmington, they would drive down, or else they were parking at Main Wakefield, but it fills up too early and then it's got too expensive. A lot, most of, I would say, if it's half and half, I'd be shocked that it was half Wakefield residents. I think the vast majority are not from Wakefield.
I think Councilwoman Moser, I don't really know.
We don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, that's the thing, I don't feel comfortable with the idea of, I mean, it's, yeah, it's a dollar more per day. It's a thirty, what about now, we're at two dollars now?
We're two dollars.
It's two dollars now, we're looking to go to three, you know, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that seems to me a pretty significant increase, and it's still five bucks more a day. At the same time, we're trying to encourage people to use public transport and not use their vehicles, and even if half of those people parking there are Wakefield residents, I don't want to impose a five-dollar, you know, a week tax on them to do the same thing they're doing every day just to commute to work. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I was thinking of that too, but the only thing is, they're paying six dollars, right? If they're across from the Tonos, right, the Tonos? So I'm just thinking that, just, I'm not sure that the dollars.
As someone who, I pay for parking, there's no place that you can park for free and take public transportation into. I used to park at Wellington, now I own my own spot at Oak Grove. I think the three-dollar fee is not, you know, we plow those spots, we put resources out to take care of those spots, we plow the sidewalk. Parking is expensive everywhere, and I don't think three dollars a day, I mean, would people want it to be two? Of course they did. I loved it. I loved paying just two dollars.
Sure.
But I would still pay three, understanding that that is half the price of everywhere.
Right.
Oak Grove just went up to nine a day.
Right, which means, which means the MBTA.
Two hundred ninety dollars per week, per person.
Right.
Round trip in and out of Boston, out of Oak Grove.
So I think for what we put out for resources to plow, to plow the sidewalks, to make sure things are clean, it's a convenient place to park, I don't think it's, I don't think we're taxing people. I think it's.
We're one of the lowest, one of the lowest communities that provide a fare. Revere seven dollars to park in their garage a day. Wakefield's six. You go up to Redding in April, they're up to eight or nine. They come to us because our prices are the lowest from other areas.
But that's also like, you know, not the worst thing. I mean, the fact that people are coming to us, that means they're also driving down the main street and they're seeing our businesses, so they're more inclined to use the business. I mean, we're talking, this is a tax. We're talking about increasing, you know, in essence, a tax by fifty percent, and there's, as best I can tell, no solid numbers to support why that is. I'm not seeing that there's an increase in the maintenance cost by fifty percent. I'm not seeing that, you know, we have no data on how many of these folks are residents and how many are out-of-towners, and I don't see a basis for this. Just because we're lower priced doesn't mean that that's a bad thing.
Tony?
Ed, we're still going to be the lower-priced option. We are, by far, we're going to be the lowest-priced option. When they're charging seven, eight dollars, we're half the price at three dollars. So we're not driving, no one's going to go leave Wakefield and park at Redding and pay two dollars more, three dollars more. They're still going to come to Wakefield.
But you're going to have a Wakefield resident that's going now and doing the same commute and paying an extra five dollars a week to do the commute.
And gladly do it.
And gladly do it.
In my opinion, Ed, I'm sorry, I'm going to disagree with you. They're going to gladly do it, only for the fact that they don't have any other option, Ed, and they'll gladly pay. We still have a large contingency, and our police department will support this statement. A lot of people come from out of town and park on our side streets on a regular basis and walk to the drain station.
Paul, I would sooner, and I can tell you, there are people that park on Main Street and walk down, you know, Chestnut, for example, but I would sooner tag those folks and generate revenue from people who are violating parking restrictions.
I would too.
I would sooner do that than I would impose, and, I mean, no one is going to gladly want to pay a fifty percent increase to park. I'm sorry, but I don't know, you know, what world we're living in, if you think that's the case. Wakefieldians are not looking to pay that. I don't, and it's, this is minimal revenue, and it's just another, it's just another, you know, tax, we're just jumping about fifty percent on folks, at the same time that the T is constantly increasing, and we're trying to promote, you know, this, you know, commute in, use public transport, use commuter rail, you know. It's completely contradictory, I think, our messaging.
But as someone who paid it for years, as I said, years and years, I bet everyone there was holding their breath, wondering when we're going to raise it, since everyone else just went up with their prices.
How long has it been, two dollars, Steve?
Ten years.
Ten years, it's been two years.
I don't know. I think.
Eleven.
Eleven. Ten, eleven.
And I know the amount of resources we spend taking care of it, because I always emailed Steve and complained when my walk on the sidewalk was icy, or I had to walk on the street, or things, you know, a tree was blown down. So, I mean, I would, at this point, I would call a question.
But if that wasn't, if there wasn't parking there, we'd still be plowing the sidewalks, we'd still be plowing the streets, we'd still be dealing with downed trees.
I don't think we'd be plowing.
I mean, I run that regularly, you know, and so I use it, you know, as a pedestrian, as, you know, as someone who's using it recreationally, not using it, you know, for a commuter rail.
Steve, do we have any other spots besides Greenwood where we actually have paid parking spots like this? There's nothing else, right?
No, that's it.
Yeah. I mean, I think that we could talk for hours on this. I think it's, both sides have good comments, but I think it's, to me, I always thought they were six dollars, frankly. I thought they were already six. That's why I think it's a great deal. I never talked to Dan about that.
Yeah, it was two dollars.
We commute together in the same orange line, but.
I move that we accept the Advisory Board of Public Works to increase to three dollars.
A second?
Yes.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so six to one in favor. Okay, D is that Department of Public Works requests authorization to auction surplus equipment. Nineteen-seventy Sakara snow blower, eleven-foot Frink plow blade, eleven-foot root plow, eight-foot Meyer plow, two eight-foot Fisher Minute mount plow blades, nine-foot Fisher Mount, Minute Mount plow parts, FMC two-hundred gallon spray tank, FMC one-hundred gallon spray tank, power liner, sixty-nine-hundred line painter, nineteen-eighty-six weed harvester, twelve-foot landscape trailer, eight-foot woodside utility trailer, twelve-foot John boat, ten horsepower Giant Leaf vac, thirty-six-inch Bobcat mower, skid steer sweeper attachment, twelve-fifty replacement water meters. Funds received for all, but the twelve-fifty replaced water meters will be deposited to the general fund, and funds received from the twelve-fifty replacement, replaced water meters will be deposited in the Water Enterprise Fund.
What these are, Mr. Chairman, are old tools and blades and plows and snow blower that we didn't get anything in trade for. So that's why, that's from nineteen-seventy snow blower, I guess there isn't a great demand for it. So what we do is we put these out to auction, and, boy, if we got twenty thousand dollars for all these combined, that would be great. I imagine the old water meters, someone will only buy for parts or scrap metal, but we can't get rid of old items like this unless we call them surplus equipment, so we'd be looking for the town council, not to get penalized by Mr. Lieber, town council to declare this as surplus equipment and let us go out to auction so we can put a little money back in the general fund. I'd rather have twenty grand in the general fund than a bunch of old plow blades stacked up that we can't use behind the DPW barn. This will happen from time to time.
I mean, I move that we authorize the auction of the surplus equipment as read by Peter.
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, zero, here and then. Thanks, Steve.
Question all planned.
Dan? Sure, yeah. Okay, for E, traffic advisory recommendation, this is three. Eight-ninety-four Main Street, the four parking spaces on the east side of Main Street, between eight-ninety-four Main Street and the Hallmark Health Building, be posted with no parking between six AM and ten AM, and three PM and six PM, Monday through Friday. Two is a stop sign and white painted stop line being installed on Walnut Street at the intersection with Gould Street. Three is a stop sign and white painted stop line be painted on Beech Tree Circle where intersects with Whittier Road, and a stop sign and white painted stop line on Whittier Road opposite the Beech Tree Circle. Comments? Questions?
I just wanted to comment briefly on the eight-ninety-four Main Street, the parking spaces, that had come up previously, and I had, you know, raised objections to the idea of losing four spaces in that area. I spoke with Lieutenant Scory further. He certainly spoke with the Traffic Advisory Committee, and I think they really came up with such a better alternative here, where we're solving the problem of the congestion without losing the parking spaces. So I thank them for staying with it, staying at it, and, you know, and talking with him about, you know, what other ideas we could come up with. We talked about these hours, and it just made a lot of practical sense, and I think that this solves both problems, so I think it truly is a win-win. So I appreciate the efforts to get us to this point, because I think it's a better resolution to an issue that is a real issue for folks in Greenwood.
Sure.
I move that we accept the traffic advisory recommendations as read by Peter for eight-ninety-four Main Street, stop sign on Walnut and Gould, and a stop sign on Beech Tree Circle and Whittier.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any none? Okay, F is Wakefield Emergency Fund. Possible discussion regarding application of Wakefield's emergency fund.
Let me do.
On you, yeah?
Okay. Maureen was very helpful in working out with Wakefield Emergency Fund. Actually, some of our other communities do have an emergency fund, and this is for when something tragic happens in a family, there is a untimely death, well, I guess they're all untimely, fire, talked about a fire tonight, any other item that, they need a little help to get back on their feet. We do have some money in an account, thirteen thousand dollars that Tonos did in their fundraiser when they opened up. So what this would allow is Wakefield residents to come in, there is a confidential application where they can fill out and come and talk to me about what their, what their issue is, and it is a one-time, one-time help. It is not just money. In fact, it's not money, it's going to be either gift cards, you know, to any area that they want, or maybe paying for room to help them, and also connecting people with services that they need. We'll run it through our office, at the town administrator's office. I have spoken with a couple of people that will be advisors on this as well, in case that I do need some help, and I think it is a really good service that we can certainly give to people, and I know that Melrose in particular has found great success in it, and I think it says a lot about the community, and I do thank Councilwoman Buck for bringing this to my attention and helping out with the drafting. So, thank you.
I think it's great. Drew?
I, I think this is great, and I think it's great that Tonos helped us start this. I'm just wondering, it seems like a long application for somebody who's possibly in a crisis. Is this on par with other communities, what other communities are doing?
I will tell you, actually, I cut it down.
You did?
I did. I'm happy to cut it down more.
It just seems really long and really detailed to me for a crisis situation.
I thought about that a lot too, and I will tell you that, I'm not going to be too much of a stickler, let me tell you. If they come in, we'll help them out a little bit with it too, because I know they'll be in a crisis, but I did actually cut and slice a lot of things that other people had that I thought was maybe too much.
I mean, perhaps it's something you do together with them.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And I'm even thinking, you know, putting forms online makes it easier as well, too.
Excellent point.
So that might be something we look at.
Steve, is there another, just a general question? So the Wakefield Emergency Fund, this might be Maureen's too, but are there other ways we can generate money without taxing people, Ed? To, obviously Tonos had a one-time fabulous offer, thirteen thousand.
I think we could do any, any sort of fundraisers we want.
Just, okay, just, okay. So that's just open for discussion. I didn't know if everyone out in the TV land knew what was going on there, because I wasn't sure how that would perpetuate, you know, the fund, which is tough.
Can I just ask, so this money comes through donations to the town?
Yeah, we'd have to accept them.
Okay.
The town council.
And it's for the purpose of emergency aid to individual, not organizations?
Yes, individuals.
Right?
Residents.
Paul?
So, uh, in my discussion with, um, Mr. Mayor over this right now, will there be a mechanism set up, though, for the organizations that may wanna do a fundraiser for this? Or will it just be that they'll be out making a, just a general contribution and designate it towards this particular account?
Well, we can set up different mechanisms, but that's what would have to be accepted by the town, by the town council.
Ultimately, it would have to be accepted, so, so would it just be like someone donating?
They could, yeah, and individuals could come in and say, okay, I wanna donate as well, just on their own. Yeah. Thank you.
Just to keep with the theme of transparency with this, um, do we have some sort of mechanism, or what sort of mechanism can be put into, into place so that there are, you know, not concerns about, you know, monies being misappropriated, or, you know, any allegations of, of impropriety, not suggesting that there would be, obviously, but just to eliminate that, you know, from a possible discussion going forward, what sort of safeguards do we put in?
Right, but we're not gonna give anybody money, so to speak. It might be a gift card to get items at a store that they need toiletries and something. It might be a hotel, it might be food or what have you, to, you know, local places. So we're not gonna give anybody money, so, I think that would keep that.
I'd just keep it more like from the oversight piece, because, you know, a gift card to somewhere, you know, is, is there a way of, of some assurances there so that people know that the money is going to, you know?
Oh, I think, I think we'll work with these people. I think we're, we will know, too.
I'm, I'm not saying that people are gonna be fraudulent, I'm saying more in terms of when it's being, being, you know, distributed out, you know, what sort of oversight is there?
Oh.
So, say, say, Steve, you know, ten years from now, you're no longer Town Administrator, we still have this in place, you know, what, what sort of oversight is it, just to make sure?
Well, yeah, well, that's why we have the application process, and we have a, uh, we have to go through accounting and everything, so there'll be checks and balances like everything else.
More from the perspective of, um, I'm, I'm not concerned about the recipient, I'm just concerned about the making sure that it goes to the right, to the right folks.
Right, no, I know, but we'll have an application, that'll come in, it'll be processed through our office, we'll have to go to accounting. Uh, I mean, that's kinda normally what we would do. I, I know what you're saying, I don't know, I'm not answering it right.
I'm just saying, you know, so it's like a, like a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar gift card to some store, all right, that's given to someone, and it's just said, oh, it's given to someone. I understand that, you know, trying to be, you know, keep people's information confidential, but, you know, um, I'm just trying to figure out what kind of safeguards we have to.
Well, I think the other thing is, anything that comes out of that, uh, that fund would be on our warrant, okay, would be reviewed by our warrant signer here, so there would be a check afterwards.
Okay.
So that would go through that thing.
Would it be subject to a FOIA? I mean, if somebody really wanted to know, wouldn't it be subject to a FOIA request?
Oh, absolutely, it is, too.
It would be redacted for the names, but I would think it would be, okay.
So this is something we do at Rosie's Place all the time. The city of Cambridge has an emergency fund, uh, city of Melrose has one as well.
And so there's an annual, at the end of the year, this is how much was given out to this many individuals, and we can put that in, that we do that every year as well. It's a, it's a, you know, it's in case of emergency. This is not, this is us helping people out in our town who need it. You know, Cambridge, Cambridge has had a couple of big fires. Melrose, I think, has given out, um, more than like half a million dollars in the time that they've had this, and they've actually, people are continuously having fundraisers. Their aldermen actually have a fundraiser that goes to this fund, so it's something for us to think about here. I'd happy to do that, so... But, yeah, we can, we can put in, at the end of the year, Sherry and Steve do reporting.
We can report on that, and also on the warrant each time it will show, so there is, yeah.
Yeah, just make sure it's as successful as we can make it, you know, and so I wanna make sure that the procedures are in place so that there's no questions and there's no issues that would distract from the good work that this is intended to do.
I run one at Suffolk Law School. We have an emergency fund for students who are struck with some extraordinary emergency, whether someone who, um, you know, years ago lost something in Katrina, or had to go home for a, a sudden death and couldn't afford it. I think it's pretty easy, but I, you know, I appreciate you saying the next Town Administrator might be a bumbling fool. But it is pretty easy to say, see when someone's in crisis, and for a small amount, what we can do to help them out, so it's pretty...
What I took from this conversation is that in ten years, Steve's gone.
No, no, don't say that.
The bumbling fool that we, the town council put in, right, so...
Five years, but you're...
But it works well.
Okay, so, that's great. Uh, Maureen, thank you very much, that was a lot of good work, and I think it's a great fund, um, we just saw Tuesday, you know?
I move that we accept the Wakefield Emergency Fund as presented by Steve and Maureen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, seven-zero. Okay, uh, plaque, a possible vote to approve the Margaret Moore plaque.
As the council remembers, uh, we, uh, approved, subject to viewing, the actual plaque for the, um, playground up at Colonel Connolly Park. Um, I have been consulted by, um, one of our grammarians on the board, I won't mention who, that the, that the comma should not be there, "The sound of joyful children at play." "No comma was music to her ears," Margaret Bernadette Moore. Um, I heard that it was pretty, looked pretty tasteful. And I think the, the council did want it back, so...
Questions, comments?
Without, no comma needed, okay, without the comma, okay.
I decided it.
Questions?
You do not need the comma.
I mean, you could have... A comma if you wanted it, but it's not gonna be proper.
Couldn't ask Dan Lieber, too, I mean...
I vote that we accept.
I teach writing and edit people, so, yeah, let's get rid of the comma.
All right, get rid of the comma.
For what it's worth, my wife agrees with all of you on getting rid of the comma.
Of course she does, she always does.
Without further conversation, anything else that we wanna comment on for the plaque? I mean, it looks like it's pretty straight up for...
Accepted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Hearing none, opposed, seven-zero. Okay, Santa's Headquarters, this is the most, most important thing we're doing tonight. Possible vote to approve the request from the Wakefield Lions Club to place Santa's Headquarters on the common during the week of November, November twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, through December twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, and to have Santa arrive on December eighth, twenty-eighteen, as well.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, seven-zero. Okay. Personnel appointments, so local building inspector, possible discussion and vote to appoint applicant as the building inspector, Joseph O'Callaghan.
Yes, as the, uh, council is aware that Joe Callahan, uh, Joe, Joseph O'Callahan of Malden, um, was hired as our, um, I'm gonna call him the local building inspector, the assistant building inspector to Mr. Alberto, this was budgeted and discussed. Uh, Mr. O'Callahan comes with, uh, experience as a building inspector in Malden, has his construction supervisor's license, and the, the council is all aware of that. We do need to appoint him, uh, the council needs to appoint him so we can actually enforce zoning, uh, because it's one of the statutory appointments that the, uh, that the council has. I think that, um, uh, he's gonna work out very, very well. Um, he went through a pretty big, uh, interviewing process, so, would like that to happen if we could.
Okay, motion to appoint?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven-zero, all opposed? Hearing none? Okay, five B, Lake, uh, Lake Bench Committee. Possible discussion and vote to appoint two members of the public at large to the Lake Bench Committee. This is what we discussed quite a bit the last month or so, um, hence the moratorium and the committee of five. So we have Paul Summers and Anu Gurwak.
I move that we, uh, bow them to sleep.
Second.
A second, they both had lovely statements.
Yep. Any discussion further? All in favor of approving both?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I'd like to add a little addendum to that, too. Uh, if Maureen still wants to be the liaison from the town council, I thought that might be nice, but I don't wanna steal any thunder if you...
I'm happy to do it if nobody else from the council feels like doing it.
Any discussion, anyone else vying for that position? I thought Maureen would be good. So, do we need to vote on that, or is that just?
No.
Okay, so, I think that, um, Maureen would make the perfect person for it, and a member, and so that's done. Okay, C, election town, I'm sorry, you didn't change your mind that quickly.
No, no, I'll bring it up later.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Well, and speaking of about this, so we did this last meeting, I'm just wondering if there's an update on the Public Safety Building Committee that we mentioned six weeks ago. If there's been any update or any applications about that, so...
We'll have to...
Because we've been talking about, that was six weeks ago, so...
Right, we'll have to... Sherry, can you make note of that? Sherry, since my handwriting's not as good as yours. Thank you. Oh, please, go ahead.
The post is actually in process, so it's not been posted, so we haven't had applications yet, because it's not been posted as of yet, and I'm working with Sherry on that, so... I think that probably answers the question for you.
Excellent. We're on, we're on the stick tonight. Okay, uh, C, election town meeting workers. Possible discussion and vote to appoint Wakefield High School students as election town meeting workers. I, I love it, too.
So I vote, um, I move that we approve Andrew Rosenberg, Rebecca Hunt, Rachel Janelle, Joanne Janelle, Ellen Marcello, and Dale Denham to be high school pole, um, pole workers.
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanna double-check, Tom, we don't have any issues with if somebody's pre-registered but not yet eighteen, is that an issue with, are the rules at all? Or is that, is that fine?
These are all eighteen.
These are all eighteen.
They're all eighteen, yeah.
Excellent question, though.
Okay, so we're, so everything is fine, right, we're able to, okay.
Excellent. All in favor of appointing the six students?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Excellent, I think that's fabulous, jump in.
Sherry gets a lot of credit for this, 'cause, 'cause her idea, she came up with it, and, um, got great responses from the, uh...
Hey, Sherry, it's a great idea.
From the schools, so, uh, and I think these students are very excited, super excited about coming in and being part of democracy, so it's wonderful.
It's fabulous, especially since we have, uh, spots we can't fill at times, so this is, and they're enthusiastic as well.
Yeah, they are.
It's fantastic. Okay, uh, six, approval of the minutes, regular board minutes, possible vote to approve the October fifteenth, twenty-eighteen, regular minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Also, executive board minutes, possible vote to approve the October fifteenth, twenty-eighteen, executive minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, seven, license and permits, new common victualer license application through December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, AMMR Inc., DBA Honeydew Donuts. Comments, questions?
Which honeydew is that?
I know.
Head of the lake.
Head of the lake, okay.
Oh, the head of the lake.
Oh, good question, yeah.
Should've spoke up earlier.
Didn't know you were here.
By the way, thanks for putting the, uh, stop sign at Beech Tree Circle, 'cause I've almost got hit there a few times coming out of there.
All of us, actually. Um, just, yeah, if you can just state your name, I'd just...
So I'm Derek Robertson, and I live at one Beech Tree Circle.
Excellent for the stop sign, okay. Questions or comments from town council?
So you're just taking over then, the business? Yes, on the choir, and it, from John Kennedy. And do you intend to make any changes to it? Is it gonna be status quo, hours, anything different? Yep, just continue same as, yeah. Okay.
Julie?
I have a question about that site. I, it's nothing on this, but there's no restroom there. Is that, is there like a zoning rule around not having restrooms in certain size, um, restaurants, do you know?
I believe Jackie always said that it depended upon the number of seats.
So that's what it's based on?
And, and after Mr. Kennedy actually physically removed one seat because of that one issue.
So we're maintaining the same number of seats that you're, from the person you're acquiring it from, okay.
Agreement location has no restroom.
What's that?
Agreement location.
I know it doesn't. I guess, I, I know it's a more, I know it's not a specific issue to you, I was just curious, I've had it, I've been asked.
Well, they do, actually.
Good question.
Good luck.
Thank you.
It's a great spot, it's a great business.
Good luck with the stop sign.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin.
Just one other question you have.
Yeah, sure, just one more.
There was fifty dollars because it was twenty-five for a TV and twenty-five for a radio. Do, we charge for ra, radios, that's considered entertainment? Is that, that's been our policy all the way through? I'm sorry about that.
Thanks very much, good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Do we need a final vote?
Oh, yeah, okay, excellent, Paul.
Give me a break on the seats.
Okay.
I vote that we approve the new common victual license application, um, AMMR Inc., formerly known as Honeydew Donuts.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Oh, not formally known.
DB, doing business as.
Known as, continuing to be known as Honeydew Donuts, sorry, thank you.
Okay, all in favor again?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none?
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and the new entertainment.
Oh, and the new entertainment.
Yes, and I move that we approve the entertainment license, um, for the same business. You're good.
Second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Hearing none? I didn't know they were separate, I thought they were gonna take out a term. Well, it's a different fee, I guess we need to do that. Okay, um, did we catch all those before?
You did.
Okay, so... Matters not anticipated by the chairperson within forty-eight hours of meeting. Um, Julie, why don't we start down?
I'll start with me.
Start with the one in red.
All right. Um, actually, I, I appreciate the moment of silence, um, at the start, and, um, I know many of us have reached out to our friends and neighbors in the Jewish community, and, um, I'm told that the, they light candles as part of their faith, and, um, they said that it would be nice to read their names, so if you would indulge me, I thought I would just read the eleven names, and I think it's worth noting that four of them, um, lived through the Holocaust and then were killed, I'm sure we've seen that, then were killed in their own temple in the United States, and so it's just tragic, um, and, uh, and it's a crime, and it's a hate crime. So if you would just indulge me, um, Daniel Slane, age seventy-one, Joyce Feinberg, age seventy-five, Richard Gottfried, age sixty-five, Rose Malinger, age ninety-seven, she was twenty-two during the Holocaust, Jerry Robinowitz, age sixty-six, Irving Younger, sixty-nine, Cecil Rosenthal, fifty-nine, David Rosenthal, fifty-four, Bernice Simon, eighty-four, Sylvan Simon, eighty-six, and Melvin Wax was eighty-eight. So thank you for letting me do that. Um, I also wanted to thank, um, Steve and Peter. I've started to talk to them about perhaps, um, exploring the possibility of an environmental committee, perhaps a, an official town environmental committee. We have some grassroots and some community organizations, but, um, but the very preliminary stages of that, but, um, I hope that in a future meeting I can bring a proposal to my fellow, fellow counselors here and talk about that. So I just wanted to put that on your radar. Um, I, and, and I do appreciate all the people who came. This is what happens when you let me go first. I, I appreciate everybody who came today. Um, I think, yeah, I'm disappointed that the, um, town council didn't take up an official vote on yes on three. I think it's so much more than just a law. I think it sets the vision for our town, and I think as leaders, we should have done that. And I know that, um, I asked, and I think a number of other people asked for it to be in the agenda, and I'm just disappointed it wasn't, and I wanted to express that. But I really do appreciate everybody in town who is, um, really speaking up and using their voice against hate, whether it be for the transgender community or, um, you know, any other vulnerable populations, 'cause when we stand up for one, we stand up for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed?
I do remember our Jewish friends and neighbors during this difficult time for them, uh, it was an attack, not just in Pittsburgh, but an attack on, on the religion as a whole, and it's just, it is a hate crime, it's, it's intolerable, and, um, I hope that justice is, is in fact served, although it's, it would, it'd be hollow comfort for those who were more directly impacted, certainly. A reminder that Oct, we're coming to the close of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October, and I think it's so important that we not, not lose our awareness of that issue after October thirty-first, because it's, it's an issue that impacts our community directly, every day, uh, every hour of, of every day, um, and, uh, Wakefield Alliance Against Violence has done such great work, but, um, it's, it's up to all of us to do our part to support our, our, our neighbors and our friends and our community on that important issue. And I also want to, uh, remind everyone that coming into November, it's often now referred to as Movember in that it's, um, it's, uh, Men's Health Awareness Month, and that's oftentimes something that, um, can be overlooked, especially with some of the older men, um, in our community. Things like prostate exams, um, are, are so incredibly important, so if you, if you have a parent, if you have a, a spouse, if you have a friend, you know, encourage them to, um, to, to, you know, go get, go get checked, and, and just make sure that, that they're in tip-top health, um, so we have a, a healthy, strong, vibrant community going forward. Thank you.
Ian?
Um, I have two points. Uh, the one is, as liaison to the fire department, Steve and I met with some of the, um, the fire chief along with, um, some of, uh, the captains and, um, prior to the, um, fire at the church. And we will be, there are concerns, and there are things that, um, I think the fire department will be asking of the town council, of the town, that seems even more striking now, after having watched them do such an unbelievable job, but knowing that they need certain things. So, um, I'll be coming back on that, 'cause I love that fire department. Um, I also, um, had asked that the, not that we tell people how to vote, 'cause that's not what we're asking to do, but that we, as a council, support question three. Um, I asked it to be put on the agenda. I know as, as former chair, I would never not put something on the agenda that was asked by me. I appreciate the struggle that, that was decided for that, but I, I think anytime any one of us asks for something to be put on the agenda, it gets put on the agenda. Um, I have been contacted by more parents, more citizens on this issue than really I have been on any other, um, in my several years on this board, and I think we heard from some of the folks, certainly the, one of the moms that spoke, um, talking about how poignantly she's terrified that the rights might be taken away for her child, um, and how the opposition to this is, is rooted not in, in any kind of factual basis. to this is, is rooted not in, in any kind of factual basis. I was, I was also moved by, and I saw, I saw a comparison on this issue when Town Council Squirrel Hill, it's one of the members, which is the, the community that the Tree of Life synagogue lives in, indicated that fighting hate and intolerance, promoting kindness starts at a local level, which we're not seeing it at a much higher level, and in fact, they're talking about taking away certain rights. So to promote it at the local level is something that we do. It is not, this is a local issue. It's certainly a local issue for our students who are transgendered, our citizens who are transgendered, and I think for us to speak in support of them is, is not a very difficult thing. There's not a policy, we do not have a policy in this board to not take a stance on certain issues. We've had different votes on it, but that does not make a policy. We don't have precedent. We have precedent going both ways. So I would just, I wish we could have spoken as a whole board, because I know that we have members on this board who are concerned about the rights that might be taken away, and I think, you know, people want to know how we are standing, and we could have taken a vote, but I certainly support it, and I've been supporting the question three, yes on question three publicly for several months now. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So, a couple of things. Julie, thank you, Councilor Smith-Gowden, thank you for reading the names. I also just wanted to let everyone know that we have a temple in Wakefield, and their board is actually meeting today to discuss how they are going to recognize the tragedy that happened this weekend, and they said they would let us know, and hopefully we can all be a part of that. And on that note, just, Steve, a little memory went off as we approved Santa, that one of the, one of my favorite activities in town is the menorah lighting, and last year we said we would help them in any way that they need, and so I hope we start those discussions soon, just a little sidebar. And update the Friends of the Lake, Friends of the Lake Breakfast, annual breakfast is Sunday, November fourth, at Bear Hill from eight to eleven, so if anyone wants a ticket to that, come, it's always a great event. And then just to reiterate what Ann and Julie said, I want to thank the members of the public who came and testified here, so Pino Mascherelli, Samira Patel, Janine Fabiano, and Laura Baker. Thank you for coming and sharing your stories. Thank you to the people who have emailed and called on this issue. You know, I, I was looking at meeting notes, I actually brought this up in April when we were talking about the name change, that I would be back in front of the council asking us to support this issue. It's not an issue that I started supporting recently, I actually was looking back. I testified at the State House on this issue as an attorney in twenty-twelve. In twenty-fourteen, when I was the Director of Public Policy at Rosie's Place, I testified again. I watched from the gallery when the House passed it, and our delegation, who didn't come here today, but Senator Lewis and Rep. Broder helped pass that law. I, Freedom Massachusetts came in front of our Human Rights Commissioner, Commission earlier this year and spoke about the need to vote yes on three, and it was a pretty proud moment when I got to last month sign on as a counselor and support this law that I've been working on for six years, and that has nothing, my, my support of it is nothing to what the folks in our town who deal with this discrimination hatred every day. I had a meeting with Steve and Police Chief Smith, I think in February, January, February, and we had started discussing it then, and what we would do as a town to make sure everyone knows they're welcomed in our town, and Police Chief Smith, who has endorsed yes on three, turned to me and he asked me what was in it for me about doing this. He said, "Why, why do you care?" And I said, "It's the right thing to do." And he, he's turning, goes, "I agree." And that's how we left the meeting, and so I am incredibly proud of the people and the other communities who are endorsing this. I encourage everyone on November sixth to go out and vote yes on three. Yeah.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last meeting, I remained silent. This time I have a list of items that we'll try to address. The first one on my list for consideration by this board and to the proper department is to address the current flooding that occurs on a regular basis on Greenwood Street in the Greenwood area as you approach the train tracks. Every time there is a heavy rain, that whole area from the tracks to Main Street floods, and it's been an ongoing thing now for at least a year that I know, because it's been reported by all the businesses between Greenwood Street and Greenwood Plaza. Now it's going to get, be coming into the winter area, and my fear is that for safety reasons, if that should ever freeze going on your approach to the train tracks, what's going to stop it? Okay? The water needs to drain and be cleared up somehow. If it's a clogged pipe that's preventing it from getting to its final destination, I think we should make sure that it's cleared so that the flooding no longer occurs, and that would be something that either to Mr. Mayor or to this board for consideration that we should address at some time soon. General items, just for updates, we have conducted two public meetings to discuss parking concerns. They were all attended by various citizens and merchants in the town. A couple of immediate outcomes came, but at a soon-to-be-determined meeting of this board, a proposal will be submitted with a, with hopefully a proposed vote of the recommendations set forth by those two meetings. Mr. Mayor and I are going over our notes to put something together to present to this board. As an interim issue to address some of their concerns, if you notice the parking area after Armlet Headquarters along the train tracks is now lit, it's cleaned out, the abandoned vehicles have all been towed, it's now an area for anyone and all to park, so there's ample parking now in addition to what we've had, so the issue where they can't park without having some infraction, if you park there, I don't think there's, there are no signage for as far as hours of when you could be there, so it's open for a good chunk of the day. Wayfinding Committee is close to presenting the results of this discussion for the council's consideration. We spent quite a few meetings on that issue, and hopefully soon we'll have something that we can present to this board. I know Mr. Dombrowski has, we'll be presenting our findings at that meeting when Mr. Faverman comes in again, and we can discuss it in full. Sign bylaw committee has met numerous times to discuss the overlay sign bylaw. We're making very good progress on that. We will also, again, at some point in the near future, I'm not thinking it's going to be soon as the others, coming in and making a recommendation to this board on our findings for that. I have been trying to initiate discussions with Mr. Mayo in regards to creating a job description for potential Economic Development Director, which we've all had made comments on in previous meetings, and I think I've been asking Steve to work on this now for several years now, so I think it's...
I'll have ten left.
Yeah, according, according, according to some. Hopefully, hopefully we'll have something to move forward on in that case at some time, but these are just ongoing items that we need to work on. And finally, it's been a tough week for all of Wakefield citizens with the loss of the First Baptist Church and the Tall Spire Nursery School. I was just recently sent a picture from Eagle Rock in Braycott, and it showed two weeks ago a view of heading north towards the Tall Spire, and the church is there, and the same person who went up there yesterday took another picture, and you see Town Hall now instead of the Tall Spire. So it, it, it's, it's going to be something that will be gravely missed, and I could be, you know, couldn't support the idea of putting a spire back in there as soon as, as soon as we can, and, and put the church back in its place, and it's back to its glory. And with that, that's all I have at the side.
Thank you, Paul. Tony?
Wow. Couple of things, I'd reach out to the Temple in Wakefield over the weekend, and as Maureen pointed out, they are having a meeting tonight to determine their next steps of action concerning what happened at Squirrel Hill. Saw a pretty cool commercial, or pretty good, it wasn't even a commercial, the stand-up to cancer, I guess, wasn't it, what would you call it? Event at the World Series game, which was really cool for a personal perspective that it coming up on my five years of diagnosis, so it was really special for me to watch that. We have town meeting coming up, we have the statewide and local elections coming up, so please make sure you get out and vote, and as this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving at this point. I'm good.
We'll be meeting before.
I saw it, the twenty-sixth.
Don't be sad, we'll meet, we'll meet.
Don't be sad.
Tune in.
We're trying to get...
I misspoke.
No worries.
Strike that for the minutes.
You good? Tom? Oh, Sherry, did you have anything? Okay. Steve?
Yeah, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Number one, in early voting, we're probably up to about ten percent of the electorate that has taken advantage of early voting, and we were one of the few communities that was open Saturday and Sunday, so people have had ample time to come down. You still have the rest of this week to come down and early vote. Lot of people on Saturday and Sunday, I was there, I'm not going to say checking in on because Betsy doesn't need any checking in on, I was there saying hello, getting a cup of coffee from Betsy, but she's doing a great job, her staff is doing a great job, and I think people seem to be very appreciative, so there's no excuse. You had all these days to vote, and I think that ten percent is pretty good at this point. We are continuing to meet with the Baptist Church. They had a wonderful ceremony Thursday night at the Episcopal Church, was really quite moving, and we continue to talk to a lot of the members of the, their church council. They are meeting tomorrow night, I'm going to be meeting with them to say what can we do to work with you as a community, so while we'll be reporting back to the board. We're also working very closely with the Tall Spire School, and in fact, we met today with Kathy Relahan, who was running that school, along with the Wakefield School Department, because we have eighty young students, or seventy-nine, actually, eighty young students in Wakefield that don't have a place to go. I will tell this board that we are looking at the Herd School. It's available, we would have used it before, so I'll be coming back to this board to talk to you about that. Town Council's been very helpful, school department has been great, so it really is all of these groups coming together, just like it was all of these groups for the fire. And when I tell you that people are reaching out to me from different communities, Steve, can I do anything, different departments that aren't necessarily, you know, first responders, do you need me to come to Town Hall and do anything? Really, I'm so proud of our entire staff and how they all pulled together, so I do thank the council for their support, and we will move on, and we'll help the Baptist Church, we'll help the Tall Spire kindergarten, and we'll work with all these groups to see what we can do. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Steve. Again, we want to thank the fire department for all they did, and the surrounding fire departments for all they did in helping to put out the fires, while save other buildings locally from ashes and potential fires in their buildings. Chief Sullivan did a great job, as someone mentioned, he's the emcee for probably seven communities coming in, and that's not an easy task. So, we're having a joint school committee, town council meeting on December fourth, twenty-eighteen, it's probably well overdue. Steve said in the past this has happened once in a while, but since they're forty-plus percent of our budget, we really should know what's going on as well as do, do some things together that we haven't done in the past, at least the recent past. So again, the joint meeting's going to be at the Walton School with the school committee, town council, December fourth, six to seven o'clock for a meeting, and then, excuse me, seven o'clock for a tour of the Walton, the new Walton, new and improved Walton.
Community tour.
Community tour. Next, the, I had a call from Dan Benjamin, who had a few meetings with veterans in town, and they are requesting that we, as well as the fifteen communities around us, start our meetings out with the Pledge of Allegiance. He said that it's been going on for a while, chatter around now with the veterans, and he said we bring it up today, and it's something we should put on the agenda, so Pledge of Allegiance before our meetings. The school committee's been doing it for years, also there's fifteen, town council or Board of Selectmen or whatever they're called, a select board around us, they're doing it, so just something to discuss. I told him I'd bring it up. Again, town meeting is Monday, November fifth, seven o'clock, so I know we mentioned it early, but, so it's this coming Monday, for a reminder. Also, November fourth, the day before Sunday, the FOLQ, Friends of the Lake Quantapower Breakfast at Bear Hill Country Club, their annual breakfast, all are welcome to attend, as well as, of course, everyone here. And Mark Sedella, you're definitely welcome to attend. And, I think that's it.
Steve, do you have babysitting for town meeting set up for Boys and Girls Club?
Oh, good point.
Boys and Girls Club said they were going to, told me they were going to do it.
Okay, so we can...
I'll follow up, I haven't seen anything from them on that, so I will follow up with them.
So, just a motion to adjourn. Next board meeting is supposed to be November twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen, at six thirty PM.
Maybe earlier.
Maybe earlier. Right, so.
You want me to...
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Adjourned.
Thank you.